All right. My clock, it is seven o'clock. So start with the pledge of allegiance. I think we're working this way. So Mark, you're up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our August 19 meeting.
Moved it. We approve the minutes of the August 19 regular meeting?
One edit on page four of six, the second line from the bottom. The motion was seconded, I think it's supposed to say. Not scheduled, but it works as scheduled. Okay, second.
I have one other, what I think is a typographical layer. It's on page two, right in the middle of the first paragraph. I think it's, you meant to say voting process?
Yeah, that's what it is.
See where that is, Scott?
Fourth line down, it says, membership and C-O-T-I-N-G. Okay.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we have no appointments, no old business. We'll move right on into business. The first item is Connecticut general statutes eight dash twenty-four, referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission acquisition of eighty-seven Simsbury Road and two twenty-nine Mountain Thank you, Mike, and Abby, for the detailed memos explaining what's going on here. You have anything you want to add?
No, the memo is pretty self-explanatory with respect to both properties. We simply need to make sure from Planning and Zoning's perspective that these things comply with our conservation and development plan.
These are both properties I know we've discussed at one level or another, have been on our radar. There's no action required tonight. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Not I.
Okay, I'm planning to be at the Planning and Zoning Commission next week. I think they're going to schedule it for Tuesday, their meeting on Tuesday. Are you planning on going as well?
No.
Okay.
Do you want to refer them just to make it official? I think that's a requirement.
Oh, yes, so we need a, I'm sorry, good catch. So I do, I guess we need a motion to formally refer these matters to the Planning Commission.
I'll make the motion to refer these matters to the Planning Commission.
Second the motion.
Is that all you guys need?
Yes.
Your good Scott. All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. The next item is the conveyance agreement for eighty-seven Simsbury Road. This is the Methodist Church. Again, there's a detailed memo, thanks, Mike and Abby. There's also a copy of the draft conveyance agreement. It might change a little bit, but the essential terms, I suspect, will be the same. We will ultimately, I think the plan is ultimately vote to approve this at some point, but we wanted to get it out in front of you all in the public tonight. Any preliminary, did I miss anything, Mike?
No.
Any preliminary questions or concerns?
Do we have, do we have a town hearing, a town meeting on this at some point, or how does that work?
No, the town meeting for purchases is anything over a hundred thousand. So an acquisition for no cost does not require a meeting.
Good. They mentioned a second building on the property. I was aware of the church in the front. Is it, the second building, is that something that's significant, or is it considered like a shed?
It's a very large barn, similar to the CSA barn on Holcomb, about that size. And we very much like the condition and we very much like the storage space. So when this comes to us, there have been no discussions of demolishing that.
Thank you.
So I understand how the property was conveyed to the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, but how did it then make its way to this trust?
It's my understanding that the Hartford Foundation did that pretty quickly after they acquired it. And it, my understanding, Mike, you correct me if I'm wrong, or if you know different, that's relatively standard procedure for them when they acquire assets like that, that they're not equipped to manage and maintain, that they find these kind of trusts who are dedicated to monetizing the assets for them. So I think they did that pretty quickly.
They also use the phrase, their charter does not allow them to hold land. So they flipped it to, decomay, in the hopes that they would maximize the potential return. It was at that point in time that the town got involved and said, hey, what about us? And we're working toward that final.
And has anyone taken a look at whether the town is assuming any significant risk by waiving the environmental inspections?
So the answer is yes. What you will also have, the reason you have the conveyance agreement before you, is we didn't think it made sense to send the referral over to Planning and Zoning without some context around it. You should be getting at least one more document, if not up to three more. The one document is a white paper from our attorneys who discuss the reasoning behind approaching it the way we're doing it and how the liability is limited. We are, we have that in draft form and we will be, once this agreement is finalized, we will be sending that over with this. There also may be two supplemental agreements, but I'll defer to Mark on that.
Yeah, I think we talked about this publicly. So I think we're shooting to have this back to us at our next meeting. That might be aggressive, but no later than October fourth is our plan. So you would see the opinion letter we're getting from our attorney on the liability issues.
Yep.
We would have an agreement that we have in principle with the Friends of Holcomb Farm, but we haven't reduced it to writing yet, where they would wrap this into their use agreement, so they would take immediate responsibility for it, both the property and the buildings on it for maintaining it. And we're working on, we have an agreement in principle with the land trust to fund up to a certain amount, the demolition costs for the church building, if ultimately we decide that it's better to demolish the church based on its condition. In the interim, the Friends have committed to doing a study for us and an analysis of whether it makes any sense to try to save a portion or all of the church. So our plan is to have all three of those in front of us before we take action on any of them.
Thank you.
And if the Friends are willing to fund the demolition, do we need to give them an easement on the property? Is that what that is, or?
The land trust?
Yeah.
We haven't hammered that out yet. That's one of the things they've asked us to consider, is that if they're going to expend significant funds on the property, they may look to have us add it to the conservation easement. So that will be ultimately a decision for it for us. The way I'm currently contemplating the agreements is that it'll be left open to us. The town will make and have the discretion to make whether we want the building to be torn down and then whether we want to accept their offer to fund it or to fund it on our own. And of course, we have potential multiple sources. That's the route we're going. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I'm just saying, if we had to fund it, it becomes a cost to the town, you know, something that we hadn't planned for. Is it significant, or?
We're trying to pin that number down. So that's why what we're trying to do is have all of our options covered, depending on the ultimate cost of it. But yes, you're right. The one source of funding that we've discussed from the town, if we, if in fact we want to fund it, if in fact we make the decision to destroy the church and we want to fund it ourselves as the stewardship fund. So that's another fund that was not funded by taxpayers that we could use.
Okay.
Brett?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Ben?
No.
Anything else?
No.
All right, so we've already referred this, and then there's no further action at this time of the hour. The next item on our agenda is the purchase and sale agreement for Mountain Road. Again, I don't think we're going to take action on this tonight.
Correct. You're right.
But the agreement is in front of you, so that you can take an opportunity to look at it. We have to fill in the final details based on the survey. Pretty self-explanatory memo and the agreement's there. We'll start down in your event. Ben, you got any questions?
No.
All right. Brett?
I guess the, the purchase price, is that kind of within market rate for?
About seventeen thousand dollars an acre. And we think it's a very reasonable, if not low, price.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
I will also add, because I confirmed today, it's, we had this property appraised a while back when we first, a couple years ago, and it's right in line with the per-acre price that we had appraised. So I think it is the start price.
Now, my question was about the purchase price, but that's been answered.
I saw that there was an easement on the remainder of the property. Doesn't, I'm not the real estate person on this board, doesn't that restrict them from doing anything else on the property?
It certainly restricts certain of their uses, but it will provide them access to the remainder of the property and the seller's satisfied that whatever constraints we would have with easement are acceptable to them.
Okay.
Got that answer right?
You did.
Any other questions? Again, once we have the Planning Commission's opinion and the final details, we'll bring this back for action. All right, the next item on our agenda is a town manager's report, fiscal year twenty-five work plan departmental initiatives. Mike?
So ladies and gentlemen, you will see this document once a year, and what it does is after the budget is set, we go back to the individual department heads and we say, over and above what you're doing on an operating basis, you know, the day-to-day stuff, what do you plan to do for the town with the money that the board and the town, Board of Finance, Board of Selectment, and the town taxpayers have given you? This is in brief what each of the departments has provided to me, and I put it in one particular document. I won't go through it line by line, but there are some things that I'm particularly, particularly noteworthy. Out of the town manager's office, we are well underway obligating the 1.6 million of remaining ARPA funds. Under the grants office, that's Catherine, seeks to identify new grants. That was a strategic initiative of this board. Under the purchasing and risk management, we need to create one uniform filing system for all RFPs and related responses. Betsy has quite a bit to do with Kimmy on ClearGov. You'll see a new process that will unfold to you for the upcoming plus-one budget and then the final budget in the new year. Human resources, we're well on our way. Thank you to Peggy and thank you to Mark to amend the personnel rules. Those will be eventually back in front of you for approval. They'll reflect current state of laws as well as our labor contracts and current practices. Abby's working toward meaningful development on the Freshies and Karnes Town properties. Kimmy will be, will have her hands full, not only with ClearGov, but with a deeper implementation of VCS, which is a time and attendance software, as well as the full implementation of an electronic accounts payable system. John Lambert is, you know, we keep talking about it, we need to remain vigilant on cybersecurity threats. Police Department, among other things, are working to obtain Tier One and Tier Two Connecticut law enforcement accreditation. And then public works, Kirk is going to have his hands full supporting and guiding the five new supervisors as they work into their positions. And then on page three, the library, we've got some very aggressive bids to oversee the hundred and eighty thousand dollar monetization of the library space. Human services, youth services, Sandy would like to, if other towns participate, initiate a CLEAR program with the opioid grant funding. If that was to get off the ground, we would be here before you, long before we involved ourselves in anything. And then Scott's doing quite a bit of digitization as well, online dog licenses, e-recording, online marriage licenses, and electronic vital records. So I would encourage the residents or anybody to click on the link, the agenda, and you'll see exactly what the money you put into place is doing for the particular community. Couple of other updates that are not on the agenda that I simply wanted to touch base. Number one is Aquarian. That serves some of the town in terms of water. They are up for sale. They are currently owned by Eversource. They are valued at 1.7 billion dollars and they are expecting to get 2.7 billion dollars for it. So there will be, if it happens, within the next three to six months, we'll know who the buyers are. The buyer, one particular buyer, is a regional water authority, and that's what they are. That's their name, the Regional Water Authority. They're about one-third the size of Aquarian, so they will digest, if they are successful, a company that is twice as big as them. That's always concerning, at least to me, for a couple of reasons. As a regional water authority, who has higher rates already than Aquarian, yes, they will see some economies of scale by absorbing a larger operation, but there is no way to amortize that billion-dollar premium that they're paying in any other way than to put pressure on rates. So I bring it before the board to let you know we're monitoring it. To some degree, it's out of our control, but those are kind of where things stand with respect to Aquarian. I wanted to update you on a meeting I just attended over at the Park and Recreation Board had a meeting. They had one resident who was going to turn out to speak on the noise that the adjoining pickleball courts were creating for the condominium association, the Gables, I believe it's called. And we had over forty people there when you included the board. So it was a very good hearing with a lot of support for pickleball and a lot of residents frustrated with the noise that could be some days, twelve hours a day. So the park board listened to everybody. I had to come here for the seven o'clock meeting, but they're going to consider all the opinions, they're going to huddle on it, and then they'll probably seek your guidance as well, hoping to find relief for the residents, which may be in the form of sound barriers, or it could be in the form of relocating it temporarily or permanently, or it could be in the form of do nothing, or it could be in the form of creating a recreational complex that's at least 500 feet from neighbors. Currently, the, some of the condominium buildings are as close as 78 feet. So there's the click and the clack that is unique to pickleball, but that's a developing story, if you will. We are listening, we'll be, you know, kicking around ideas, and maybe at a future date, some months down the road, the board may be involved to suss out what we should ultimately be doing. The last thing is, you may or may not have heard, we've had for a considerable amount of time, some parking issues at Town Hall. There have been overflows of students that would like to park at the high school complex and are unable to, so they have been parking here at the Town Hall complex. In May and into early June, we had as many as 22 to 25 cars per day. Most days, that's not a real problem, but when we were going through early voting, when we were going through certain library programs or senior programs, we were actually pushing out the ability for residents who had business here at Town Hall to find a space and come into Town Hall to do their business. So the Board of Education has been aggressively working this issue. We think we have a solution. They think they have a solution. They have found 21 spaces at the high school, and they'll be asking students to come forward by Friday. There'll be a lottery on Monday. The problem should be substantially resolved, but we're watching very carefully because the problem may recur when the first quarter is ended, because there'll be a new crop of students getting their licenses and so forth. So we're going to keep working on it. We believe we have a short-term solution, and it certainly, you know, I want the residents to hear, we're not picking and choosing. We are simply saying that we want to preserve spaces at Town Hall for residents who have Town Hall business, and we want to find alternate parking specifically on the grounds of the schools, if we can, for those students who have extracurricular activities, jobs, and do require a car, and they may not have permission for it. So again, it's a fluid situation. At the moment, we seem to have a good solution, but we're going to keep an eye on it moving forward. That's all I have, Mark.
Thank you. Any questions, Mark?
Not for me, thank you.
Question for Ben.
Yep.
Is it still the policy at the high school that only seniors are given driving or parking permits, or is it kind of open to juniors?
Yes, so it is not a zoo where you can just pick your spot and whoever first comes first serves. It is, you have to have your volunteer hours put in, you have to pay a fee, and you have to write an essay to your counselor to get the senior privilege. So it is viewed as a senior privilege. Our class, I think, is a little bit on the smaller side. In previous years, like, all of the spots have been taken up, but currently there are a decent number of empty spots that have not been taken up by seniors. And the issue that has been because of the Town Hall is mostly because of juniors, especially younger, or older ones who have early birthdays, who already have their license by, already now, by the start of school. And so that access and ability to have a little bit more freedom to move. And I do find that, I'm glad to hear that there's a, like, they're trying to set up a lottery, but also I think that kids are also getting creative where they're finding friends who are really, live really close and they walk to school. But that is definitely still a thing that you hear about juniors and moving around.
Thanks, Ben.
Yep.
So I have a couple of things. First, Mike, I want to thank you and the team for doing this report. It's another great improvement, in my opinion, of getting information to our residents on just what you're working on, that what our priorities are. So thank you for taking the time to do that. I also want to recognize that, and thank you for taking the time to get involved and monitor the Aquarian thing. That's the kind of thing in the past that would have fallen through the cracks, just because we don't, didn't have the resources to do it. But here, good work in doing some of the reorganization and challenging people to take on different roles, has given you the time to do that. So I'm very, very grateful for that. I have a couple of questions on the report. The first is, as everybody here knows, there's a contingent of our constituents who are watching the walking trail at Salmon Brook Park very closely, wanting to make sure that we're, so the last report we got was that we're hoping to get started on, like, this week, right, on the ninth?
September ninth, they're mobilizing. We, that date is still in place, yes.
And we, and we're hopeful, if everything goes well, it'll be walkable next spring?
Oh, I think it'll be walkable by December first.
Wow.
All right.
We're writing that down.
All right. My second question is, I think I know what this is. Under finance, tax collection, and assessment, the seek to change the elderly filing cycle, is that the tax credit?
Yes.
Okay.
Currently, it's done on an annual basis. And if we can qualify people biannually, that would require an ordinance change. I think that would be beneficial to the seniors who schlep their tax return annually.
All right. And then my last question is, can you remind me at least what the CLEAR program is?
ClearGov?
No, the CLEAR program that we're looking to spin our opioid.
So CLEAR, there's an acronym that slips my memory, but basically it deals with mental health and substance abuse issues. So it's an appropriate use for the opioid money. In this particular case, Sandy is advocating that surrounding towns join us by pushing some or all of their opioid money into the, into the center of the table. And it would create a program for at least two years. We hope to show the state success at dealing with both mental health and addiction within the confines of these, call it five or six or seven towns. They then may, if we're successful, come forward and fund it longer. So we think if we seed it with this opioid money, it would get necessary mental health and addiction services. Unfortunately, a lot of mental health issues are caused by addiction, and a lot of addiction issues are because they're underlying mental health issues. They're called dual diagnoses. And this would address that in a formal way with almost a, it could be a police officer in some cases, it could be a social worker in other cases, depending on what we're, we sign up for. But they would be there to outreach some of the cases that perhaps the police in these towns are visiting the houses far too frequently. I have always said that not every police call needs an officer with a gun, a badge, and a taser. Sometimes a social worker or a mental health worker is a better approach, and this would put that tool into place if we were successful.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to the first selectmen report. I have three quick things. The first is just a shout-out to the Friends of Holcomb Farm and our other community partners who did their first annual hoedown at the farm. I want to say last weekend, I'm losing track of time, but it was a fundraiser to raise proceeds for the Fresh Access Program. There's a lot going on there. Puppet shows and line dancing and games and costume contests, and our horse council put on a riding and shooting demonstration. There were a lot of people there. It was a great success, and so wanted to make sure that we thank them for their efforts regarding that. And then two other updates. First, on our battery storage siding council proceeding, so it was late last week, the siding council met, summarizing their action. They approved our request to become a party in the proceedings. There were three separate property owners, I believe the three adjacent property owners, who also sought party status. All three were approved. The council also consolidated them into one party group because their interests are similar. And the council also approved our request to hold, we keep calling it a hearing in Granby. I'm going to change the term and call it a Granby-centered hearing, because they don't physically hold hearings in Granby. It's, the hearing will be by Zoom, as I understand it, but it will be geared toward Granby residents to provide their, but so. So far, all of our requests have been granted. We are working regularly with our council to develop a schedule of how the proceedings will go. We expect a revised schedule for public input based on those actions soon. So I think either Mike or I, whenever we meet, when it's appropriate, and based on the advice of our council, will give updates on where we are in that process.
One quick add-on to that, Mark.
Sure.
I don't recall if it was front page current or front page of one of the other state papers, but the siding council has a 97% approval rating. And the intent of the article was to say, hey, why is that? Is that overly generous, or what? And they had a variety of people who said, yeah, it's overly generous. And then there were a variety of people, especially those on the siding council, who said, no, the people that come before us are well-prepared, they're well-established, they hire professionals, and so on and so forth. So I think the approach that Granby is taking, given the sensitivity of that particular piece of land, by gathering an attorney in, and as Bob DiCrescenzo said, it's now going to be a discussion amongst, you know, the professionals, if you will, those that have experience in the site. But I wanted to pass along that 97% stat- But I wanted to pass along that 97% statistic, not to set expectations, but just to communicate that there's quite a bit in front of the Siding Council that moves forward, and we are swimming upstream.
All right. The last thing I had was just an update from our Town Center Study Committee. I think, as I reported out, we had done an RFP to seek consultants to help us develop a master plan for the Town Center area. We got, I want to say, seven or eight very qualified responses. The committee narrowed that down to two finalists. We have interviewed both finalists. We're working on checking the references from both now. The committee meets again on September 25th, and our goal at that meeting is to decide on a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen on which of the finalists to consider hiring to help us with that process. So if we meet those goals, maybe as early as our first meeting in October, we would have an item in front of you to get a consultant on board. If there's nobody in, well, if anybody in the public is interested, all of our meetings at the Town Center Committee have been recorded, including our interviews with the consultants. So if you want to see what they presented to us and what questions we asked and what their answers were, you can review those online. All right. Any questions for me?
I see Deb is in the back. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I just came from the Alliance Club meeting, and I have more money, and I'm looking to put it down, even on our clock, so we can get it ordered. And I just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
So Deb, let's hold off a minute. We're almost there. When we get to public session, I'll ask you to come up where you're at the mic and everybody can hear you. Excellent. Thank you. Selectmen reports. Mark?
Between now and our next meeting, I believe we'll have open Farm Day in Granby. I just wanted to make sure that all the town members took an opportunity to enjoy that particular activity that our ag commission sponsors.
Thank you. Peggy?
Nothing from me this week.
Nothing from me.
Nothing from me.
Ben?
All right. So as the school year has started, there is a decent bit of news around. So first of all, it is now the class of 2025 for my year of graduation, which is interesting as we are now the seniors. And so student government has started working on senior fundraising, outreach, so you might see us outside of Geisler's for a bake sale in the future. I don't have a date exactly, but that is on the horizon. Sports are starting. I'm proof right here. I just came from practice. And yeah, so no one's really had a game. I think the girls are 30 minutes into their first game in Notre Dame, so that's, I think, the first team, sports team to actually have their first official match. And so sports have started. As I improve here, there is a bus issue for a lot of sports as there is a lack of bus drivers. So I was supposed to not actually be here. I was supposed to be playing in East Hampton tonight, but because of busing issues, that is now a later game in the season. So that is a recurring issue that will affect the sports season. Also, I'd like to say that we have a new Board of Selectmen represent student liaison, Zinyab Zafar. So she will be joining us next meeting to help me spread the news and give high school perspective. And then also, I'd like to just say a welcome to all the new administrators and teachers who have joined the high school and the Granby school system, because there has been a decent bit of movement in teachers retiring, coming into the district, and I feel like they've all joined in and helped make our learning environment continue to be excellent.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ben?
What sport do you play, Ben?
I play soccer, indoor track, and then tennis.
Thank you, Ben. Now it's time for public session. Deb, come on up. Give us your name and address and tell us where you're at.
Okay. My name is Deb Kowicz. I'm at 235 Hartley Road in West Granby. I am currently working on the missing clock project. We're trying to replace the clock that used to be out front, and I just wanted, I just came from Alliance Club meeting where it looks like everything's definitely full steam ahead. We've got plenty of money coming in. I would like to put a down payment on the clock and order it shortly, but I'll know by the end of the week when I have a couple of confirmed donations, so that at least I have that. And that's about it. I just wanted to give you a heads up. I was just going to come in and say hi and, you know, working on it, just waiting for everybody to come back from summer. You know, the committees are now back in session and meeting, so I should have some really good news really soon.
Well, thank you for taking the lead on that project. That's awesome. It's something that we've been looking for a way to solve, a problem we've been looking to solve for quite some time. So thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome. You've got to thank the generous donations from the clubs that are doing it. I was just overwhelmed by the amount of support that I have from them, so.
Does it look the same as the old clock or is it?
So I have seen a picture, and, well, first off, Deb, thank you. It was about three months ago, if not four months ago, she walked into my office and she said, I'm raising money for a clock. And I go, what clock? So I let Mark know what the plan was, and Deb and I have kept in touch. She's done all the work, and we simply are going to, once the clock gets here, connect it. It needs some electrical, it needs a base, and then a plaque or two. So the town will graciously receive it, provided there's no issues from the Board of Selectmen, and a number of civic organizations around town have contributed.
And we're going to give them credit for it, trust me. It'll be all over town. It'll be in the paper, it'll be on the plaque. I've told them that their names will be on the plaque for donating, and they'll have an article and a picture, and I just can't thank them enough because I miss the clock. I like the clock. But the clock will be like it, it will be the same clock that we had before, a little bit fine-tuning, tweaked, more modern components, not the gears and wheels that they used to have on the old ones. It'll be a very modern-day clock, but it will be readable from the street, and it'll work. It'll actually work. So I thank you guys very much for your support as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very grateful. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else want to address this in the public session? Don't think we have any need for an executive session, so I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
This is a paper?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Good night.